We're going to start here in about a minute. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this morning's special meeting of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors, October 23rd, 2025. We're going to start our meeting today with an invocation led by Supervisor Gould. And if you would remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor Barelli. Thank you.
If you'd join me in prayer. Lord, we thank you and praise you here today. Lord, we thank you for the American system of self-government. And we thank you for this experiment in democracy that you've given us, Lord. Lord, we have employees that do dangerous jobs. We just ask for a hedge of protection around them, Lord. Bring them home safely to the loving arms of their family. Lord, give us the wisdom to run the county properly. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please face the flag of a country that has brought more prosperity to the world than mankind has ever known. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hoorah. Here we go. We'll go to our business this morning. I'm going to open the public hearing. Discussion possible action regarding approve the adoption of Mojave County Ordinance Number 2025-03. A request to adopt the 2025 Mojave County General Plan to replace the 2015 Mojave County General Plan. As required by Arizona revised statutes, sent back from August 4th, 2025. BOS meeting to planning and zoning, to rehear and direct the subcommittees. Return for review and then be brought before the board at a special Board of Supervisors meeting, which is today. Commission recommended approval of the draft 2025 Mojave County General Plan. With the proposed changes presented by Angle Holmes for the Golden Valley Project. We're going to start the public hearing with staff giving a brief presentation. And then I'll make a call to the audience for all of those that wish to provide comments during public hearing. Director Holtry.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. Just to kind of recap, we. Since the last board meeting that we presented this item. We did go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and reheard all of the subcommittee meetings. And allowed for participation in each of those areas from the public. We did take in some comments. We received some feedback. Like Chairman Lingenfelter mentioned, we do have additional changes to the plan from that. The commission heard. Those changes and ultimately approved those as well. Today, we'd like to recap. Everything that's been changed in the the general plan, as well as the process that we've gone through. And present that to you. I'll have my planning and zoning manager, Matthew Gunnerson, present that at this time.
Good morning, Chairman Supervisors. So here's a brief overview of kind of the the process that we've gone through to get where we are today. This process began back in March of 2024 with the board approval of the work plan for this general plan update. Through a series of community meetings and online comment submittals. We've received comments from property owners and stakeholders throughout the county. The initial draft of the plan was sent out to stakeholders throughout the. Throughout the state back in April of 2025. Those include all neighboring counties, including out-of-state counties. State departments such as ADEQ and ADWR. All the cities within Mojave County, the tribes within Mojave County. State land and Arizona Commerce, as well as the Bureau of Land Management. Sent to the supervisors and that's all required by state statute 60 days prior to. That public hearing that was first held by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Through that process, none of the outside stakeholders provided any comments or corrections. We did work with some of the supervisors regarding the South St. George planning area, as well as. Some of the language about requiring urban level improvements within three miles of a city. That updated plan was first heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission in June. Then went back, they continued that, went back in July where they recommended approval, came to the board in August. And as Chairman Lingenfelter read in earlier, that was then sent back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So those meetings were held in September. And then with that change to the Dorado area, now been sent back here today. So I wanted to go through the various areas of the county where we held our community meetings and just kind of talk about. The changes in the the land use designations that were made. As the staff went through this process. The the big goal on our part was to update the those these land use designations in these maps to better fit where we are today. Than we were 10 years ago when this process was done, rather than a major overhaul of the entire document. So up in the Arizona Strip area, so this is Colorado City. So a lot of comments about keeping parcels one acre in size or larger. With a focus on residential, they didn't want light industrial. Concerns about too many gas stations and coming into the area. And to keep any commercial development along Highway 389 up in that area. We also received several comments about increased county resources up in that area. As far as local services, parks and recreation opportunities, library system, and additional road maintenance. So in looking at this area, so Colorado City, including Centennial Park and Cane Beds. This is an area that's considered an outline community. These are communities that were largely developed before. Any general plan in the county was ever put into place. And so the designation for this area in the general plan is a rural development area. But the way that these outline communities work is that as long as. Things continue to develop in the way that they currently exist, they would not be required to come in and do plan amendments. Because of that outline community designation. So here you can see it's largely this teal color, which is the rural development area. So in the general plan, that's five acre parcels or larger. In Centennial Park specifically, there's a commercial as you get into this Centennial Park community. If that commercial wanted to continue in that same commercial corridor, they would be allowed to continue to do that without updating the general plan. Because of that outline community. So then we get into our Beaver Dam, Scenic and Littlefield areas. So there's light industrial along Highway 91. The scenic area had was part of a an area plan. That area plan had a lot of. Pretty high-density designations in it, medium-density residential, high-density residential. But the. Pretty much all of the comments that we got wanted to keep one acre lots or larger. And so a big change in this area was changing it from those higher-density designations. To a suburban development area, which would fits the one to five acre lots that we see almost exclusively in the scenic area. So we did want to amend the area south of I-15 and Highway 91. That is currently showing as light industrial to that suburban development area. There's a fair amount of parcels that had a public facilities designation, but are privately owned and zoned agricultural residential. So we wanted to change those to a suburban development area as well. And then there's a, there's an area north of Interstate 15, only accessible. If you're going through Mesquite, Nevada, it's vacant. And all owned by the Bureau of Land Management. And that had several different designations. And so we changed that area with no. Public access or physical access to a rural development area. So here we have the 2015 on the left. You can see the the yellows and oranges. Those are those. Higher-density designations and then the proposed in this general plan on the right, largely changed to that green color, which is our suburban development area. We still have that pink and red along Scenic Boulevard. So that's the commercial area as you go down Scenic Boulevard. And then there's one orange area on the left of that image on the right side that that is an existing subdivision. So in Beaver Dam and Littlefield. We wanted to keep commercial areas along I-15 and Highway 91. We did receive a comment about some of the area that is on the west side of the Beaver Dam area. And they are working on a proposed development that they use the 2015 general plan designations. In working on that development and as they requested that that remained the same. Here you can see what was provided by them for that project in development. This is something I would still need to obviously go through rezone processes and come to the board. But they're utilizing the existing general plan designations for this development and ask that we keep them the same. So here we have our Beaver Dam and Littlefield. Again, there's a lot of that commercial along the interstate and Highway 91 going to the north. And then that as you get further to the east towards Utah, we have that change to that suburban area. In the, then this is as you go through the gorge towards Utah, you get to St. George. I believe we spoke about this the last time we presented, but you can see that the St. George area is continuing to expand to the south. There are current developments that are right on the border where you have residential backyards where their rear property line is the state boundary. And so working with supervisors, we. Came and brought up this St. George Special Planning Area to change this area that's immediately south of. St. George to an urban development area to signal, hey, if there wants to be future development that goes across the border. The county would be open to that. There are some existing mines in that area. That we donated with the blue with that heavy industrial designation because those are currently there and being used.
I'm going to stop you right there. We just had all of our screens up here go blank. So we're going to wait until you go to the next slide. Okay. Did you bring everybody else down? What happened? Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From your introductory statement, apparently if I wanted to have any input on this plan, I had to go to the Planning and Zoning Meeting.
No, we had our community meetings. We had our online comment submittals. We tried to make it as easy as possible for people to be able to provide comments and. Give their input on the process.
And you also said that I had 60 days notice of to review the plan. The only plan that I got was the the plan, this plan that I printed up myself that I received on a Thursday before the Monday meeting. Before, when it got sent back to Planning and Zoning. Which is inadequate and I couldn't even see the pictures to actually figure out what was going on. So so I don't think we've complied with the 60-day notice, to tell you the truth.
Mr. Mr. Chair.
Director Holtry, go ahead.
Supervisor Gould, yes, we did send it to all of the Board of Supervisors in April. The plan, the draft plan, also what we have done prior to or after that, after our last board meeting, we did do a redlined. General plan and instructions on how to view the map online. And we sent that to each of the Board of Supervisors and offered also to meet with any of the supervisors if they wanted to meet with us and go over it directly with staff. But yeah, the requirement from state statute is to send it to all stakeholders. Prior to that, 60 days prior to that first public hearing, that was done in that April, in April.
Interesting.
Everybody have video? Supervisors? Everybody have video? Okay, continue.
So then we get to our Lake Havasu City and Topoc area. We didn't receive a lot of comments for the Lake Havasu City area. We did receive some comments regarding the airport area, which is within the city limits of Lake Havasu City. As well as questions on an alternative route to connect Lake Havasu to the Yucca area without having to get on I-40 and Highway 95. And then there was discussion at the our community meeting regarding the need for industrial development for further economic development in this area. In the Lake Havasu City, there is very little vacant land that's privately owned. Most of the vacant land is either state or federal-owned property. And so staff isn't proposing any changes at this time. So here we can see the Lake Havasu City area. Again, yellow and oranges. Yellow is the low-density residential. Orange is medium-density residential. And then the blue that's on the north side of Lake Havasu there is light industrial. And then the image on the right is. Horizon Six, that those smaller lots that are outside of the city limits. Here we have the commercial area right at the interchange of I-40 and Highway 95. Where we have a lot of commercial development and light industrial designations. And then as you go north, we have our Havasu Heights area. Havasu Heights, we have the the yellow and the kind of the green diagonal lines there. Those are two subdivisions that are currently. Going through the the process and being built out. The red area that is west of the highway there is the River View Storage Facility. And then into the Topoc area, this blue area that we have, so there's this heavy industrial, so there's industrial in between. The railroad and Interstate 40. And then that area north of the railroad, that's that dark blue color. Is the Sterling Solar Project area. And then we get to our Golden Valley area. So largely suburban and rural development area already. Most of the commercial and urban development areas located along Highway 68. With the notable exceptions being the Dorado area that we'll talk about a little bit further. And then also the Privata development, which is still under the development agreement and going through their their subdivision process. The vast majority of the comments that we received in this area was keeping lots to one acre or larger. And then we received some comments not wanting any further commercial development in Golden Valley. Received other comments about if there were future commercial development in Golden Valley to make sure that it stays along Highway 68. And so in looking at those, this is where it looks currently. So you can see along Highway 68. That grayish color is our urban development area. And then you have the reds, which are commercial. And then some higher-density residential as well. The Dorado area, I don't know if my mouse shows up on the screen, is the yellow area north of Highway 68. And then Privata is the the large area to the south of Golden Valley there with the different reds and yellows. So this was what was initially proposed by staff after the public comments. We greatly reduced that urban development area along 68. Looking at the zoning designations and development. Basically, the the properties that were vacant and zoned residential, we changed to that suburban development area. Which is the one acre lots or larger and then left the the designations that were already zoned for. Commercial or developed as commercial, the way that they were. And then that Dorado area was changed all to a suburban development area with no changes to the Privata area because of that development agreement. Through this process, there's a couple of changes to this Dorado area. The first was changing all of the interior of this area to a low-density residential. And removing the medium-density residential that existed in it previously. And also adding a suburban residential buffer along the most of the perimeter of that development. That was initially approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission and was what was presented to the board the first time. As it was referred back and we went through changes, Angle Holmes came back with another revision. Where this Section 26 on the northwest side of the development changed that entire section to a suburban development area. Leave that border along the the northwest and south side of the rest of the development of that suburban buffer. So that new lots in that area would still keep that one acre size where they're adjacent to these other one acre lots and then low-density internally. And this was what was, this revised proposal was then approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. At the, at the meeting where they recommended approval. So this is where we stand with the current proposal that's in the plan right now. You can see the the changes in the green. So this is a suburban residential, which is one to two acre lots in Section 26 there. And then the low-density on the internal side of that Dorado area. And you can see the. A little bit better, the commercial designations that remain along Highway 68. In our Dolan Springs, White Hills and Meadview areas, the Dolan Springs and White Hills area previously had a major plan amendment done. Just a couple of years ago for the Entrada project. And so there's not a lot of changes that are, were requested or being proposed. We did receive a lot of comments about renewable energy, especially solar and wind projects and concerns about those in their area. May wanting to make sure that if there are those types of developments, that that power is kept. Within Mojave County and available to be used by Mojave County residents. Then as you look into Meadview and the the White Hills, the the Platted White Hills residential area. Those are both outline communities, similar to what I talked about with the Cane Beds and Centennial Park area. So here's the Dolan Springs area. We have a lot of commercial along Pierce Ferry Road as you get up into Dolan Springs and then other commercial development. Along the highway there. You can see there is a lot of public facilities again in this area that are privately owned or residentially zoned. And so. We look at changing those to a suburban development area. Here's our White Hills area. The the grayish color is an urban development area. Again, that was all part of the Entrada major plan update a couple of years ago. And then our Meadview area is all listed as rural development area, although it is in outline community. So there is a little bit of commercial development in Meadview and that would allow to continue in that same way that it has been without having to do. Next is our Yucca area. So a lot of the comments that we received in the Yucca area were to keep larger parcels and keep the rural feel of the area. We received requests to remove the commercial recreation designations along Alamo Road. And then we received some comments. Calling for keeping commercial and industrial along I-40. Received other comments wanting no industrial at all in the other in the area. As well as comments about increased fire and sheriff services, road maintenance, infrastructure, things like that. And then we also received some concerns about campgrounds being put in near existing residences. So the proposed changes here was to, in the Dutch Flat area, to change a lot of those commercial and commercial recreation designations. To a rural development area. That designation is properties that are five acres or larger. And so here we can see the north area. Not a lot of changes here. You can see the, on the left in the 2015 version, there's industrial that was east of the Proving Grounds. This area includes some smaller lots, residentially zoned properties. So we're looking at changing that kind of strip to a suburban development area to better match the zoning and what we see out there currently. Also in, I apologize, I don't think I have a closer picture of it. In this, the the old Yucca Townsite area, these are all very small properties, zoned A, which is our general zoning. Which allows for residential and commercial uses. The way it's split in the 2015 version is everything that is west of the interstate was a medium-density residential designation. And everything that was east of the interstate was a neighborhood commercial designation. But the the zoning allows for both. And so we had instances where people were trying to rezone their property. Because their properties were too small and having to do general plan amendments to basically continue the use that was already there. So we changed that area to an urban development area, which would allow for the the medium-density residential uses as well as commercial uses. And better fits the zoning that's out there. Then this is the Dutch Flat area. You can see some of the the pink there, which is our neighborhood commercial designations that they had packets of. As well as the the polka dotted green on the south there. That's our commercial recreation designation. So we took this area and changed it to a rural development area based on the comments that were received as we went through this process. WikiUp, we didn't receive any comments about the WikiUp area. It's an outline community. With a rural development area, land use designation, the vast majority of the parcels in WikiUp are already larger parcels. Except for the commercial that you have right along the highway as you drive through the town. And then this is the Silverado area. Which is changed as it went through the process to a suburban development area with some commercial right there just south of the the interchange from I-40. That commercial area has the zoning designations to match. So staff isn't proposing any changes here. In the Kingman area, a lot of what's been, we have in Kingman, fits the development pretty well. We did receive a few proposed changes that staff looked at and was presented to the commission. The first one being the area where the new interchange is going in. That I want to call the Rancho Santa Fe interchange, but it's not what it's called anymore. But this is just south of that Rancho Santa Fe area. We received a proposal to include some general commercial and some medium-density residential with the goal being. Developers working with city and the county to have a road that's going to connect all the way from that interchange up to Walupi Mountain Road. And kind of cut through that general commercial area. That was part of this proposal was that proposed road for the future. I believe right now, the the current what's being built out there, that interchange is going to connect to Louise within city limits. And that's kind of the end of the initial phase. This would be for for future development beyond that. And then the other, this is north of Kingman, kind of north of the Butler area. This is an area where staff is seeing a lot of single-family residences being built. We have a lot of old subdivisions in this area that kind of went defunct in the early 2000s. That are coming back to life and homes are being built. These subdivisions are still being finished. And so so we received this proposal for a medium-density residential designation on this parcel here along the Grace Neal Parkway. For future development of the Grace Neal Parkway. Along the Grace Neal Parkway uh for future development of the Grace Neal Parkway. Uh, and staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission uh thought that that was appropriate for this area. Uh, next we have the Fort Mojave and Mojave Valley areas. Um, there was, as we held this community meeting, this was uh around the same time that the uh power plant for. EPCO and MEC was going in. And so the vast majority of the comments that we got were in regards to that power plant. Um, we also received requests to better designate and identify tribal land on the general plan. Uh, working with the tribes through the process. Um, and then concerns about water and energy being sent outside of Mojave County. Um, so here we have uh the existing area. Uh, most of the commercial development is uh along Highway ninety-five. Um, and so we're not proposing any major changes there. I think there was uh one small change where we expanded uh an industrial area because the zoning is already uh MX. Uh, and that's on the east side of uh Mojave Valley there, uh as you get up into the BLM and state-owned property. Uh, beyond that, a lot of it is already developed or uh tribal owned. Uh, we did try and update the, our color scheme um in the maps. So the maps that were printed uh in the map, in, in the general plan in two thousand and fifteen, left tribal property blank. Which is the same thing that they did for rural development area. If you're just quickly glancing at it, in the book, it looked like that area was um rural development area. And so we, we've changed it, in our GIS system, tribal land is shown as the, the brownish color. And so we included that color scheme to make sure that that is put into the, the book of the general plan as well to make that easier to add. The last community meeting that we held was for the Valley Vista, of the Val Vista area. Um, Val Vista is largely plotted out already with the proper zoning designations. Uh, we do see to see, continue to see homes being built. Um, but no proposed changes within this. It's largely low-density residential with a couple of uh commercial pockets in there. We do have this area that's just north of Val Vista. This was a subdivision that was platted in the early sixties. Uh, it is all zoned, all these lots are zoned RMH, which is residential for manufactured homes. They're about six thousand square foot lots. Uh, the zoning designation is a rural development area. There are no permitted homes, or there's very few, there might be one or two now. I think when we started this process, there was no permitted manufactured homes because there's no infrastructure. The roads aren't cut in, uh there's, there's definitely roads where people drive out there, but a lot of them just cut through private property. Uh, because of the lack of development. Um, staff looked at a couple of different things to do in this to try and fix it. These are lots that a lot of times will go up for sale uh on the tax deduction. So we will, every time that happens, we get a lot of calls of people that purchase lots in this area, want to know what they can do uh to develop it. But the, a large amount of those requests are people that want to put RVs on their property. Um, and, and live out there because it's easier to live in an RV with minimal infrastructure than trying to put in a home. So the, the solution that uh staff proposed was to change that area to a suburban development area. Which still doesn't match the lots uh as they're currently plotted. But as we get people that purchase several adjacent lots. Uh, makes it an easier process for them to combine those lots and rezone it to like an agricultural residential zone. They can get an acre of land together, um, which would then allow for RVs and things like that. And so given the, the comments and the history that we've seen in this area. Uh, that was the, the best proposal uh in staff's mind. Uh, an alternative proposal could have just been to update it to match the existing platted and zoning designation. And make this a low-density residential designation. But this area does not have the infrastructure that you would typically expect with that type of. So here you can see the proposed change, just that green area uh north of Val Vista. Um, so next we get into some of the, the goals and policies and things uh of the general plan that we changed. So first one is development near city limits. Um, so uh again, the, the proposal would be to uh require or should be required to develop. To urban development standards, that's going to be providing uh water, uh centralized sewer. Um, to, to each of the lots as long as, as well as electricity, telephone services. Those are the uh infrastructure requirements that we have for subdivisions in urban development areas. So this would be to require that for any development, regardless of the size of the lots within three miles of an incorporated city. Uh, next, we, we looked a lot at, at water usage um throughout this process. Uh, so the, the goal in here that we changed it to was to monitor and protect. The quantity and quality of water resources throughout the county. Um, and have policies that match that on working with ADEQ and ADWR and utility providers and other agencies. Um, to make sure that proposed development is going to be able to go in with the necessary infrastructure. And that infrastructure isn't going to adversely affect and impact existing development and existing residents. Um, also, I wanted to make sure that we included language about promoting water conservation and encourage the use of alternative sources. Um, so whether that's uh our recharge projects that our flood control district is doing throughout the county. But making sure that also that those are done uh in feasible and beneficial locations. Uh, another big area that we looked at was renewable energy. Uh, as we were getting ready to start this update process, uh it was around the time of the uh moratorium on uh renewable energy projects. Uh, and so we wanted to make sure that the language in here uh better matched uh the updates to the zoning ordinance. I think it matched because the language previously was very vague. Um, but we wanted to make sure that we included inf, uh wording in here about um proper location of these types of developments. We want to make sure that uh solar, wind, these types of projects are going in uh locations that are conducive to. Um, where the power is needed as well as uh respecting existing property owners uh and residents of these areas. Uh, and then as we went through uh our area plans, a lot of the area plans pulled goals and policies directly from the general plan. Some of them reworded them a tiny bit, but a lot of them were just copy and paste into the area plans. We wanted, as we went through this process, we wanted to make sure that the goals and policies of the area plans were incorporated into uh the general plan. Um, to try and streamline processes as people are looking to update uh general plan and, and including area plans in those. Um, so one of the exceptions to this is the Dutch Flat area uh in Yucca. Where they had a lot more language that was specific to their area. Uh, so we wanted to make sure that those uh goals and policies were implemented into the general plan. Uh, with that specific language regarding the Dutch Flat area. Because as we were going through the process uh in Yucca, uh that was some of the comments that we received about wanting to make sure that. Uh, those area plan policies were, were included. So uh closing up here, uh some of the other changes, we did remove a few of the sections of the general plan. Uh, some of them just weren't necessary. So uh there was a set whole section in there that talked about all of the process of each general plan update since two thousand and one. Uh, we removed that. Um, there was a section on area plan, which basically just listed the various area plans throughout the county. Um, and pointed to those documents, but because we've incorporated the area plan maps already into the, the general plan map. And then in, through this process, making sure that those goals and policies were implemented as well. Uh, we removed that section uh specifying those specific area plans. And then also uh some of the appendices and exhibits throughout uh the general plan. Those that we could verify the data, uh we left in there, uh those that needed to be updated and we could find the information to update. We updated them, there were some that were old and outdated uh that we couldn't verify the information for, and so those ones were removed. Uh, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. Uh, we will move into citizen comments. Uh, the first I'm going to call up to speak is Danielle Ollie. Um, I think that she has had um a few people donate their time to her and I'd like to know who those people are, so I don't. Oh, you have them? Okay, so we don't need to do that, okay. Uh, I'm going to give you twelve minutes Danielle to do your presentation. Thank you Danielle. You want to help her out? Thanks Laura.
Can I have the AV room um put up the uh presentation that was sent this morning to them?
And the AV booth put up the presentation that we're looking for?
I don't need it on the screen, on the big screen.
Is that it, right there?
That's it.
Right.
But I don't need it up there yet, I wanted to show some things on the overhead first if that's possible. And then I'll say, put it up.
Okay, we'll wait for our clerk to come back and then we'll start your time. He's the timekeeper.
So AV, can I have you um go ahead and put the camera up first for, on the podium, she has one piece of paper.
Here we go.
And then afterwards she'll jump to the presentation, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much and everybody who got that up.
Is her time starting? All right, go.
Danielle Ollie, Golden Valley. Uh, thank you chairman for the time and thank you supervisors for uh, you know, putting an effort into looking this over through a special workshop. I want to start with some of the um, I'm, I'm going to assume that you all watched my eighteen-minute presentation that I gave at the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I don't have to be redundant when I go back through my slides, but there are some points that I want to make on there. Um, one issue that I find, that we find is that. In two thousand and two, there were area plans for each specific area, Golden Valley had their own. And from the two thousand and fifteen plan, they were kind of hidden in the very bottom of that plan. And now they've completely eliminated the area plans. So if you pull up the two thousand and two Golden area, Golden Valley area plan. The first couple paragraphs, it has very specific uh community values listed in there. There's even a little um acrostic poem that they put together to represent golden, right? What G stands for, O L D E N. And what I find is in this new two thousand and twenty-five plan, there's not one sentence about Golden Valley and what they discovered with our community comments and. Through our meetings and we've been very vocal and so it's going to continue. You're going to, if, if a developer picks up this new two thousand and twenty-five plan, there is nothing representing us. So there's going to be ongoing for the next ten years, a conflict between, oh, well, we have these land use allowable area things. But there's no community engagement listed in there. So you're going to have developers pick that up and say, well, the county says that this is allowed in the land uses. But they're going to get pushback from the residents and we're going to have to continue to keep coming up here and say, why are we not being represented? Why do we not have an area plan? Why do we not have one sentence or paragraph before our land use diagram that represents our community values? And those community values, I'm Mr. Supervisor Martin knows, we want open space, we like our dark skies, we like our peace and quiet. We love our agriculture. So where is that listed in the two thousand and twenty-five plan? The other thing I want to put up on the board. Um, so one of the issues that's been brought to the attention of planning and zoning since last year, when the rezone for the Dorado. Plan got denied is that that land use that was approved. Was supposed to rescind back if it didn't meet special development requirements and that was brought to staff's attention. And it has not been rescinded back. But on October sixth, you guys voted to rescind an old development plan that did not meet the requirements. Back from nineteen eighty-seven over off of, I think Beaver Creek or something, but, or Lake Ranch. And so why are they going back and correcting other development proposals that haven't met the requirements? But they're not going to fix the one in Golden Valley and revert the original Dorado land use to what they should have. Based off of the resolution that was found that we presented to staff and we presented to you. So now you've set a precedent that yes, you can rescind it, yes, it can be corrected. But you're not going to do it for Golden Valley residents. The other thing I want to address in this um plan is under growth monitoring, there is. Us, it says that eighteen hundred acres is what is considered a, anything under eighteen hundred acres is considered a minor land amendment. Where did that number come from? Eighteen, one thousand eight hundred acres is a minor land amendment? That seems like a lot of land to be able to go through the minor land amendment before it triggers a major land amendment. So I'd like some understanding on what, where the eighteen hundred acres comes from. Because we think that's a major proposal that they're putting in Golden Valley, fourteen hundred acres. So that would only be considered a minor land amendment in the new general plan? Kind of seems weird. Also, um, the page that I gave you guys is page eighty-three from the two thousand and fifteen general plan. And at the bottom, it says that our property rights are inherited with our zoning. It's called your bundle of rights. So we keep getting pushback saying that we're denying developers their rights by not letting them have this rezone. But your bundle of rights is inherited with the property that you buy in the zoning. So we are here protecting our property rights that we purchased into. They bought that property, thirty-six acre zoning. That is the, that is the bundle of rights that came with that property, not the general plan land usage. So in the new general plan, if you go to page eighty-three, that whole entire line is scratched out, it's not even included. They've scratched it out. Go to page eighty-three on the two thousand and twenty-five plan, that quote is gone, got a big line through it. So shouldn't developers know that when they're purchasing property, their bundle of rights is in the zoning ordinance? Not the general plan. The general plan is a guide. It is not the legal statute though, that we all bought into. Another thing that we want to bring up is the accessory dwelling unit law that just got approved, adopted by Mojave County. Where, there's nothing in the new general plan that talks about that and what the process is. I want to know, I know Supervisor Martin and I have been questioning about the water district out in Golden Valley, how's that going to affect it? Do we need, how, how's that going to affect the allocations? Do each units need allocation? Do um each units need a meter? There's a lot of things that needs to be discussed before this is just passed and then we have to figure it out as we go. Another issue is flood control. I live right at the um southeast corner of the Dorado, that's my street. And that is a major flood zone. We, it, it's crazy, it flooded really bad during our last storm, which wasn't even that long. And from the Fort Mojave issues that they're having out there with flood control, I think before. And from the Fort Mojave issues that they're having out there with flood control, I think before we approve something like that, especially still allowing low density zoning, that we need to get our flood control under control, because that is going to cause major damage downstream for us residents. And we're already seeing that happen in other areas of the county. And Ship Estates, their other development had flooding issues this last one. So can we really trust that it's being handled correctly? Now, we think we need to fix fix the issues that have been going on. Okay, so if we want to go ahead and jump to my presentation now, I only have four minutes left. Okay, so I just want to know, was it just lip service? When we were told that this is the most important time for Golden Valley to express their how they want to see their community develop and stuff, because that's what it feels like. They hosted these community meetings. They've told us this is the most important time to get up and participate, and we've actually got a lot of slack for showing up and continuing to show up. When we were told this is the time for us to participate. So is it just lip service, or are we really gonna be represented in the two thousand and twenty-five general plan update? So we all know that was, we attended the community meetings, we had our own meetings. We've showed up more than any other area. We've submitted more than any other comments. And yet, if you look at the other areas, two comments were submitted and they want suburban land use. Guess what? They got it. Oh, four comments over here in this area? You have hundreds of comments from Golden Valley, and we still haven't even been recognized that that's what's important to us. So this is the old plan. We know that they've changed it, but we still think that suburban residential right there is gonna be the best suited for that area. We all bought into that with our property rights, and that's what they bought into too. And then the commercial, that has to go. We do not need commercial back in our neighborhood. Um and then so the density increases. You guys are the experts. We have to trust you to make the right decisions. But right now, even with their new proposal, that the increase on the density in that area, it just changes the whole dynamics of Golden Valley and everything that we value and we cherish. So this, now with the changes, it still ranges in between here, which what is reasonable? That's the question that I keep asking planning and zoning. That's the question that I keep asking you guys ultimately. What is considered reasonable growth? The traffic increase? Mojave County doesn't even require any kind of traffic impact statement until after the fact of the rezone. Maybe that's something that you could look into to build up trust with the constituent in different areas. Make that something that has to come beforehand, not afterwards. Or something. Um population impact over the ten years, it's gonna, just this one development could double the size of Golden Valley. Um growth rate, I'm calculating it out at that Mojave County has a growth rate of one to one point five annually. The housing study that was put on a couple of meetings ago really didn't combat any of the stuff that I presented in my last meeting. Yes, we need about two thousand homes a year to keep up with this growth rate. Do they all have to come to Golden Valley? Because we already have six hundred on deck, ready to go, right? Or are you just gonna shove them all down our throat? We don't think that's fair, especially when we've been so vocal about how we want to see our area grow. So this is what we already have. We have the three hundred and sixty homes for the Golden Valley ranches, and that could be up to over twenty thousand already. So we've already taken on a lot of the housing stuff, and they are starting to break ground over there at the ranch project. We have Midway Estates by Angle Homes. They already have two hundred and seventy-three on deck. And individual builds, they're popping up everywhere. I can't actually figure it out the way the permits are thing. So we just want to know, is Golden Valley on track for the next ten years? Wouldn't it be wise to see how what we already have is gonna impact our area? And if anything, just please explain to us what responsible growth looks like. And where is our representation in this? Because right now, we feel like we haven't been represented. Um we feel like yeah, anyways, um yeah, so we're trusting you. We are here today trying to be polite, trying to participate in this conversation. But um we just ask that you please revert the Dorado back to the suburban land use, correct it the way you, the staff is starting to correct the rest of the mistakes that have been missed in the past. And you know, help us to preserve what we love about our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Ronald, Ronald Hulse. I'm gonna come to the podium, Ronald Hulse. I believe you had one person giving minutes, so I'm gonna allow you six minutes. State your name and your address for the record. Thank you, sir.
Uh my name is Ronald Hulse. I live on forty-four fifty-five North Laguna Road, which is three hundred feet with next to the Dorado. I'm here today to strongly urge you.
Can you uh, thank you for that. Uh can you speak into the microphone? Thank you.
Um good morning, members of the board. My name is Ronald Hulse. My address is four forty-four fifty-five North Laguna Road, which is within three hundred feet of the proposed Dorado plan. I'm here today to strongly urge you to remove the plan from the general plan. This isn't about against growth. It's about public safety, accountability, and common sense. Proposed area currently has no nearby medical or law enforcement services. Yes, there's a fire station, and we are grateful for the firefighters who serve our community. But when it comes to EMS or police response, residents are looking at a twenty-five minute wait under ideal conditions. I've experienced, oh. And we all know when a heart stops, or when there's a crash, or when someone's life is in danger, minutes matter. I've experienced this reality firsthand. When my sister suffered from a seizure, it took almost thirty minutes for an ambulance to reach our home, which hits right at the heart of the proposed Dorado neighborhood. By the time the paramedics stabilized her and began to drive to the hospital, it was nearly an hour round trip before she received full medical care. Such a delay could be fatal, and it will remain a reality for every future resident unless major changes are made. Now imagine that same situation happening to one of the hundreds of families who would move into this neighborhood, a child in distress, a senior in cardiac arrest, a serious car accident. With no nearby EMS to respond in a timely manner, this is not responsible planning. This is putting lives at risk. And it's not about a medical emergencies. Without a nearby police presence, a home invasion or a violent crime gonna unfold long before law enforcement ever arrives. A suspect, a suspect could flee or even cross state lines by the time deputies reach the scene. That's not public safety. That's a gamble with people's lives and property. Let me be clear. This isn't about anti-growth. It's about responsible development, the kind that ensures safety infrastructure is in place before new neighborhoods are built. Approving this project without nearby EMS and police coverage would be reckless and negligent. It would endanger families and expose the country to county to enormous liability, not if, but when something goes wrong. We all know our emergency services are already stretched thin. Even now, those who serve us are doing the best they can with the limited resources at their disposal. Adding hundreds of new homes without providing medical or law enforcement coverage will only ex- exacerbate those gaps. If this project moves forwards as it stands, it's, this is not progress. It's an invitation to disaster. I'm asking the board to take a stand for the people you represent and remove this this proposal outright from the plan. Do not approve another large scale development until proper EMS and law enforcement can be set in the area. Growth can be good, but only when it's safe. Safety must come before expansion. Thank you for your time, your service, and considering our safety of every current and future resident who will depend on your decision.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brian Burke. Mr. Burke, we've been told that two people are donating their time to you, so I'll give you nine minutes. And I think that's the last one that we have of that type. Then we'll get into the individual speakers. Set your name and and address to the board and please speak into the microphone.
Thirty-five eighty Mobile Road, Golden Valley. I'm presenting today a brief account of the two thousand and twenty-one well failure that happened in Golden Valley, um GVID. This is for the public record and to inform members of the board that may not be aware of the details. When the COVID, when the GVID well failed, twelve hundred people were without water in a ten day emergency. Mojave County, which manages GVID and Public Works, did not have money reserves allocated to fund the cost of the multimillion dollar new well. Since this was an emergency, luckily funding was utilized from COVID-nineteen relief funds. Currently, Mojave County contingency funds are down. They were fifteen million dollars. Now they're eleven million dollars. Another large well failure could be fiscally devastating to Mojave County, take a big chunk out of it. From public records, I could find there are still no reserve funds allocated for future water emergencies, not just Golden Valley, but any, any municipal area or any region around Mojave County. Um and if Mojave County approves a double, tripling, or even up to twenty thousand new homes um in in Golden Valley, uh that just makes it much more likely to happen. Additionally, Golden Valley Water System, it's old, it's had problems with arsenic, especially if the new wells need to be drilled due to future well failures. And um increasing the four hundred and two water allocations to four thousand, from what I can see is really just based on outdated data projections. As a reminder, GVID wells continue to drop one foot per year, year over year. Angle Homes, this is a big contention. They are not paying any funds to upgrade the water system, nor to set funds aside for another water emergency, nor paying for building new fire or police stations. And no, land is is a joke. It's a pittance. Nor improving surrounding roads, as well as improving flood control of Dorado's neighbors. And recent pictures showed flooding around just a few Angle Homes. The neighbors were downstream of that. They basically had to clean it up, and Angle Homes never did show up to do anything, so the neighbors had to get all the mud out from their construction project. In researching developers around Arizona metropolitan areas, most counties hold the developers to account to build major infrastructure. Angle Homes, once again, is only donating two lots for the fire and police stations, which is nothing, but buildings, maintenance, staffing, and infrastructure upgrades are many millions of dollars. Taxpayers in Mojave County are going to have to cover these costs in the long term. Approving Dorado under these circumstances is irresponsible. And we have our own citizens, and we've commissioned our own study. It's called the Dorado Fiscal Impact Study. You could find that on either my website, our website, the Golden Valley, um uh well, Facebook, the Golden Valley Facebook Alliance page has a, has that document there. And the Golden, and also GoldenValleysolutions.org website. That is a very comprehensive report that basically says if you, just because you're getting tax revenue from new people that move in, that does not cover the infrastructure um and not by a long shot. And um but anyway, okay, so and if approved, Angle Homes will reap the short-term profits, and taxpayers will be burdened by the long-term tax liabilities. Kind of what is happening in Kingman, what they just approved, uh they can tax without representation there. But the growth Ponzi scheme, and this is not just Mojave County, but this is, tends to be a lot of counties. Sprolling high-density developments by themselves generate insufficient tax revenue to cover the newly expanded public infrastructure, staffing, maintenance, and replacement costs. To cover the accumulating maintenance backlog, this keeps the growth, that keeps the growth machine running. County governments erroneously believe that by approving large developments, they can grow their way out of deficits and pass the cost onto their tax base, sharing many attributes of a Ponzi scheme with negative long-term consequences. One year ago, I was proud of Mojave County for turning down Dorado project. So right now, I'm saying, please vote no. And I have a different ending. Please vote no on this for the general plan. This will give Angle Homes time to to get sufficient funds to pay for infrastructure so they can do the job right, not like a wild cat, catter. And um and we need the infrastructure paid for, more of it by them. So that's my talk. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, sir. Sheila Miller. Careful.
Hello, my name is Sheila Miller, and we are receiving the keys today for our home at thirty-nine thirty-three Teddy Roosevelt Road, Golden Valley. I would like to ask the board a question. You do not have to answer it if you do not wish to. If anybody on the board lives in a rural area like ours on Teddy Roosevelt, if you do live in a rural area, would you like a subdivision within three hundred feet of your area? Because that's what this project is. It's three hundred feet from our home. If you live in a subdivision, are your homes right on top of each other? Or are they spread out, three, four homes on an acre lot? I understand that the need for more homes in Golden Valley is growing so much. I would just ask that it be done with reasonable actions. That will be good for everyone in the community. I think we can make this work for the benefit of everybody and keep this community healthy. I've taken a look at some of the subdivisions. There are beautiful homes. Two stories, three-car garages. The sad thing is, they're built right on top of each other. There isn't any room to do anything. Yards are so small. Where are the kids supposed to play? I understand the builders need to make money, and I don't have a problem with that. I think three homes on an acre would be perfect. That way, the people would would have a sense of living out in the rural area. I think putting four homes on a house, four houses on an acre, that is more like living in town. But at least it gives them some room to do what they want to do. I'm still worried about the infrastructure problems that we have. I know the builder talked about not having to worry about roads being flooded. Last month, when we had the storm come through, Estrela Road flooded really bad. Even Teddy Roosevelt flooded some at the intersection of Chino. That's only within a first mile of Highway sixty-eight. I'm worried about not having enough water for the entire area. I would appreciate some answers to the questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Gordon Morris. Gordon Morris, followed by Arthur Ramos here on deck.
Good morning. Good to see all of you. Sorry to keep coming back. But the planning groups, the planning department haven't gotten the word. It has to come back to you. You gentlemen, I have confidence in our way in what we say. Ron, thanks for your comments. Appreciate them. Dawn, thanks for your friendship. And the rest of you, I hope will become friends. You guys say, come and let us hear you. We have gone to meeting after meeting with planning groups. I go to all the meetings. I didn't know about that one. Of course, this is being corrected. That's what today is about. But they're not listening to us. We want to keep our community like we have it. We have offered them the one-acre plan. Nobody wants to negotiate. Okay, so they gave us one block. We still don't have it correct on the other one. We're still trying to put it back in. It's not what our zoning was. Excuse me. Our zoning was two acre when I bought it in this valley. And I accepted it as that. Now, these developers have rights, and they should be able to build. I'm for growth that's amidst conception that's been advertised that were anti-growth. No! Some growth is good, but controlled growth is what we want. And we would like for them to honor what they bought their property at thirty-six acre. And then we would allow a one-acre lot of houses. Thanks for your time, gentlemen. I have confidence that you've listened to me. I wish we could get your planning department and the planning group to please listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Arthur Ramos and Kathy Joy are on deck. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Arthur Ramos. I live in Golden Valley, Arizona, three hundred feet from the project, proposed project. 300 feet from the project, proposed project. I kind of understood most of what the presentation was all about as far as the changes that have been made to the general plan, for the 10-year plan for us. But I know we're not the only area that we're here for right now. But I think we're the major area for me. And it's fascinating to me that the zoning and planning, I mean, they're computer people, and they can't make a blown-up map so we can all see what we're talking about? Our map from Golden Valley area was larger than anybody else's map on that screen there. That's one thing. Also, too, the presenter was giving a presentation to people that are in the business of understanding the words that are coming out of his mouth. But for us, it would be better to be, to speak slower and to have a good illustration of what you're talking about so that we could understand the changes from the last time. And so that's another thing. And another thing that's fascinating to me is that other areas can come into their, or send them a note, or a letter, or go into the office and tell them, hey, we don't want that. We want one-acre lots. And what do you know? You look up on the screen, and they get one-acre lots. But for whatever reason, in the Golden Valley, and I don't know how they practice their business over there, but we don't get one-acre lots. That's a simple thing. That's all we're asking. I'm sure you could make money on 1401 acre houses. There's money to be made there. Not as much as you would make with eight houses per acre. I get. But I think that this is a general plan, a 10-year plan. I mean, it's not working for us, the community. I think we should have some say-so about it. I mean, it's a 10-year plan, and it deals with what the community wants now, not what they wanted five years ago. So maybe they should hang it up, just leave it the way to one-acre lots everywhere like we have it before. And maybe in 10 years, they could come back and change the inside of their property, or whatever it takes. But please, don't allow that Dorado project to be built there. And that flooding is a big factor, too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kathy Joy. And Tyler Engel, you're on deck.
Hi, good morning. Kathy Joy, Mormon Flat Road, Golden Valley. Danielle and Art said it all. I'm not going to repeat it. All of 2024, we told you what our wishes were. The three new gentlemen were asking you, please, one acre on the Dorado project. I actually would like to see it pulled from this plan and revisited in 10 years' time. You have two major projects going on already. You have the old Provada place, and you also have the Midway project with Angle Homes. I think that's enough growth for Golden Valley right now. And anything that's commercial should be on 68. I think you agree with that, John. Thank you, gentlemen. Please, please listen to us. This is our home. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Tyler Engel. George Loyah, you're on deck. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Tyler Engel. I'm the president of Angle Homes. Thanks for the opportunity. Would like to address a few concerns there. The residents are kind of acting like we haven't made any concessions at all. They've been wanting one-acre lots, and that's the direction we've moved from the beginning. Originally, there was zero one-acre lots in the current general plan. It was all low-density, medium-density, and commercial. And so the first thing they said is, we want a buffer of 300 feet around the edge. So we did that. We put one acres around the hole outside where there's other lots. Then they said, there's still too many houses. So we removed all the medium-density that could have been duplexes or small apartments. We removed all that. They still said, that's too many houses. We want more one acre. So now, we've made the whole section, the northwest section, to be one acres. And so the project now for residential has mostly one acre, is what it's left with. 52% of the land is for one-acre properties, and only 48% is the low-density residential, which would be similar to what we develop most of the time with 6,000 to 8,000 square foot lots. So we feel like that's a good, a good medium, happy medium there. We've cut more than half of the potential housing out of the project to bring the density way, way down. As far as us not wanting to put in infrastructure, that's the opposite of what's true. That's my business. I'm a developer. I'm the biggest developer in the county. I put in more roads, more sewer, more water, and more retention basins than anyone else in the county. That's what we like to do. We like paying for infrastructure because that means I'm operating my business. The county has very strict flood rules now for any new development. You have to calculate exactly how much water to capture, where you can let it go, how much can leave, and what leaves has to be less or equal to what historically left. So you have to prove, the engineers have to prove, that you're not negatively affecting anyone downstream for water. And we've done that in our historical subdivisions. The county has stricter flood rules that they adopted, I think in 2012 or 15, that requires even more. And no subdivision in Golden Valley has been built under those new flood control rules. But we're ready to do that. We want to do that. We want to put in the infrastructure and to make sure no one's going to be negatively affected by that in any way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. George Loyah. Travon Pennington, you're on deck. Thank you.
Supervisors, thank you for your time. George Loyah, Golden Valley, Arizona. Currently, we have three projects in the pipeline, which is Entrada, Rancho, Golden Valley Ranchos, and Ship Estates, which is almost 11,000 homes. I think that's probably enough for now. And let's see what we do with the rest of it. I did some studies on it, and I found out that it takes 108 days to sell a property in Golden Valley right now. That's how long it stays on the market. The average price of a house here in Golden Valley is $233,000. This is the third time that we brought this up in front of you, folks. And I don't think our planning commission, our zoning commission, and the people who are in the office are doing their jobs, doing what you folks wanted because you've already rejected it twice. And I hope you do it again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Travon Pennington. Nicholas Diaz, you're on deck. Thank you.
My name is Travon Pennington. I work at Angle Homes. I'm involved in this development called Dorado.
You speak into the microphone a little bit more. Thank you, Trav.
Yes. I mean, our intentions today, we'd love to get this project going. We'd love to. And part of that is our intentions, we're going to invest millions of dollars in infrastructure. Like, there's, to go far as even with GVID, there's probably a likelihood that a new well is going to have to be placed at some point. There's probably the possibility that new pressure zones and water tanks are going to have to be installed. We're currently in discussions with multiple different sewer providers, right? There's probably the tune of over the next 20 years, probably upwards of more than $20 million of infrastructure being invested out there in Golden Valley using local engineers, local subcontractors, providing local jobs. We also think that this is a key product to be able to address affordable housing in Mojave County. One-acre lots in Mojave County do not address affordable housing, right? Putting a block wall around a one-acre lot, that alone, that could be $50,000, $60,000. Landscaping, a one-acre lot could be $50,000, $60,000. So we clearly think that this product and project will help address some of the issues with affordable housing, and we're eager to get after that. We have, we did work. We're in communications with the local fire department, and we have reserved a site for a future fire station, also a site for maybe possibly a future sheriff substation, if that's something that's needed in the future. And also, there's going to be a park component to this. In this current plan, there's like 12 acres set aside, whether that's a HOA park, or we could cooperate with Mojave County, providing an additional park for Golden Valley. But thank you for the opportunity. Hope you guys support this project.
Thank you, sir. Nicholas Diaz. Linda Hollins, you're on deck. Thank you.
Morning. Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, Supervisors. Nicholas. As far as with the project here, I know a lot of the concerns that have been brought up has been traffic impact, drainage, and then infrastructure improvement. That is what we have to do. That's the subdivision ordinance. By allowing like wildcat subdivisions, they don't have to follow those strict rules. So they don't have to provide a drainage studies like we would have to. We wouldn't have to provide a traffic impact analysis like we would have to. So that's a common misconception. That is what we do. That's what we're in the business of doing, is improving the infrastructure, improving drainage downstream. And then as far as, as far as how funding is provided for police department, or basically fire department, it's provided through annual taxes. So by providing more affordable houses, it will help with the improvement of the fire department and the police department as well. And it'll improve the timing as far as response times as well. But we hope to work with the county. We hope to improve that, and I just wanted to kind of address that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Linda Hollins. Angel Lund, you're on deck.
Linda Hollins, Golden Valley residence within a half a mile of the proposed project. I have a list here of my concerns. One of them is water. Sure, we have an aquifer, and there is a lot of water, but how long is that water going to be potable? What are they going to have to do to make the heavy metals and the pollutants in that water to be safe for us to drink? And how much is it going to cost? The next one's animal displacement. There are animals living out there in that area. I walk it almost every day, and I see animals all the time. And a lot of times, I see cows in that area also. Infrastructure, traffic. Are we going to put lights or roundabouts in the valley on 68? Because we're going to have to do something because people are getting killed out there on that road. How long is it going to take the fire department to get to areas with the traffic? This is one of the unpopular things. My husband said not to say, but with that amount of people coming into this, to the valley, when are we going to have to be incorporated? Substation for a police property taxes, how much are they going to go up? Waste water, what are they going to do with the runoff? Flooding and schools. I don't see that any of these are... Oh, one of them left out at the very middle. The cost of the houses, how much are those costs going to be? Are they going to be $250,000 a home? And can you tell me, anybody that even works for the county other than maybe you people up here, could afford that amount of money? Where are these people coming from? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Angel Lund. Elizabeth Miller, you're on deck.
Angel Lund, Golden Valley. Good morning. You've seen me up here before. I presented a lot of evidence, and I have a lot more evidence. This stack is only maybe a fifth of the documentation I have that shows why you shouldn't approve this plan right now and why you should not approve the Dorado. Provada, sure. They have access to the highway. That's a great place. They are looking at helping our community. Dorado, all he wants to do is use the place. You should see, matter of fact, Mr. Martin has documented evidence showing what happens when they come in and they build. They flooded out all the people downstream of them during this last small storm. If it had been a big storm, you can imagine the devastation off of Borough that it would have done to the people downstream. Have they come back and helped? Have they helped those people at all? They got flooded out? No driveways? No. And those people have sent letters. They don't help us. They take advantage of us. You denied Dorado last year. I'm asking you to do the same. We have been here over and over and over again. Now, we see, we get a 400-plus-page redlined document for the general plan three days before we come here. No one has time to go through that, and I know you guys didn't have time to go through that. I oppose you approving this plan. Stakeholders, we're never advised of anything. They come here and they tell you, oh, yeah, we've told them about this, and we've agreed with that. No, they haven't. They're trying to fast-track the Dorado by adding it in. We've had it removed. We've had it denied. Next thing we know, it's back in there again. What is going on? It doesn't make sense. It really doesn't. And now you have the AUs. There's not a word that I can find in there on the new AU regulation. You're going to have to decide what's the permitting process. Who qualifies, what land qualifies? And none of that is in there. This plan is not ready to be approved. It needs a lot of work. And I'm not even mentioning our wells going down one foot a year. And we don't have all the water that Yucca has. I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Elizabeth Miller.
Good morning, Chairman Langdon Felder and Supervisors. My name is Elizabeth Miller, and I live at 3194 West McConico Road in Golden Valley. I attended the Planning and Zoning Meeting in September. At that meeting, it was confirmed that GVID currently has 402 water allotments available for purchase. Those cost $6,250 right now. I'm very concerned about GVID water availability for current and future residents if the Dorado project is approved. Where will this project obtain their water? From GVID? If so, will they have to buy allocations? How many residential units can one allocation support? If they don't need allocations for their development, then why do individuals have to buy an allocation? And why are the allocations limited? When the current allocations are used up, what happens then? Will new residents not have access to water for their homes and properties? This is a serious concern. If it is determined there is more water than previously believed, so the project can proceed, will the allotment system be eliminated for future residents? Since the board's supervisor also sits as the board of GVID, I request you address and resolve this issue before voting on the general plan. Angle Homes representative said they recently reconfigured their project with 52% one-acre and 48% low-density at 6,000 to 8,000 square feet per lot. If that is low-density, what would high-density be? Something to consider for future development. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jane Grasser. Jane Grasser. Is there a Jane Grasser? Okay, I'll put Jennifer Esposito. I've been told a couple of people gave you their time, so I'll give you up to nine minutes like the last speaker that did that.
Thank you. Jennifer Esposito, Kingman, Golden Valley property owner within the Golden Valley Improvement District. This is a Sacramento Valley aquifer. This is a Sacramento Valley aquifer on the 600 new homes approximately that have already This is a Sacramento Valley aquifer. If you approve another 3,000 or 4,000 homes. Fact. Now, the general plan is designed for individual communities to guide their growth. At the end of the day, it doesn't matter what you want, doesn't matter what I want, it doesn't matter what one specific development, developer wants. It matters what the community wants. It matters that hundreds of petitions were filed stating that we want one acre lots. And as has been pointed out, you know, that's been an option. There's nothing to stop Angle from doing that. And the fact that they say that that's not viable, with all due respect, is BS. Because this, the board approved a one acre lot Angle Homes subdivision right across from Fountain Hills Estates, north of Kingman. And when they approved it, Angle Homes said, gee, this, we have a demand for one acre homes. Can't have it both ways. Moreover, we did not ask for one acre buffer. The one acre buffer is to design, is designed to deny the people wearing the 300-foot shirts from filing a petition against the rezone. By putting a one acre buffer, they become the 300 feet. That's designed to stop the community from having input. But what's really important is the fact that that resolution in 1987 that was supposed to rescind this back means that you have a moral, and more importantly, a legal obligation to rescind that back in the general plan, which is why the first presentation of the general plan said to revert it back. Because legally, you have to do it. And if you don't do it, the reality is, we can all sue you. Now, I've never filed a class action suit, but I have filed two cases against the county. So I think we're all aware that I'm serious here. Now, the other thing that matters a lot is, was this process done legally? Supervisor Gould said, we didn't have 60 days notice and staff said, oh, but we sent it to stakeholders in April. Guess what? That's not what the statute says. 11805, Section F does say 60 days. But if you read farther down to, I believe it's Section L, it says, "All subsequent consideration must comply with all of the previous statutes." So when you change the proposal and you add in a subdivision up on the Utah border, or you change the land use designation in Golden Valley, you have to resubmit to all the stakeholders. They have to give you 60 days notice. All right? The law wasn't followed. Now, Section B1 says that you have to adopt written procedures. Now, written procedures were not included in the backup documents when this process was first started. I believe Danielle has asked for a copy of the written procedures that have to be adopted. I mean, voted in, formally adopted. Okay? And she hasn't gotten anything that satisfies the statute. B1E says, "Provide for consideration of public comments." So that procedure manual has to specify how our public comments are taken into consideration. And clearly, they haven't been. Section C says you have to confer with, you know, certain agencies and things, the state land department, governing bodies. All right? Also, Section D says you have to coordinate and cooperate with the state land department. I want to see proof that that was done and proof that that was done within 60 days of today, not April. I want to see proof that the law was followed. Because somebody's head needs to roll if it wasn't. When you assign a project like this, it's the county manager's responsibility to see that, that your orders are followed. There is legal counsel for planning and zoning and, and whatnot. Okay? Legal counsel had an obligation to make sure that the statute was followed. Now, Section N does give us the ability to file a special action in Superior Court on the water issues. But what also matters is Section J. Section J of 11805 allows each one of these subplans to be voted on separately. Now, I'm going to ask that you do that and I'm going to ask for a roll call vote so that each and every one of you puts it on the record where you stand on this. Because I think that this should be, Golden Valley should be pulled out, although I don't think you can legally vote today, but I think, I think it should be pulled out separately and I think it should be tabled until you rescind the resolution that you're legally required to do. I mean, this is, this is not, as my husband hates it when I say, rocket science, people. Follow the law. Read the law. Follow the law. If you're not smart enough to read the law, you have staff to help you through that. Now, I agree with Danielle about this 1,800 acres major plan amendment. I think that the, the general plan needs a move to amend the general plan to reduce that. I think it should be reduced to, I don't know, 500 or 1,000 acres as a major plan amendment. It seems like it was tailored at 1,800 to exempt things like Angle Homes so that you don't get a vote. It was designed to deny you a vote on major plan amendments. You need to shrink that the heck way down. And like I said, it doesn't matter what I want or what you want or what some idiot on the advisory board thought about wildcat developments and, you know, septic tanks versus sewer systems. It doesn't matter. It matters that the resolution said this had to be put back. And you have to do it. If not, you're opening yourself up to litigation. I mean, that's just, that's just the reality. You know, I would also like to touch briefly on the GVID issue. Now, it has been brought up as an excuse that, well, new studies, there's more water in the aquifer, we're not using as much as they said when the other study was done and the original allotments were made. Now, Angle knew this, that this was in GVID. If this wasn't in GVID, this would be a completely different story. But they knew they didn't have the allotments. So now they want you, the board, to petition ADWR for about 4,000 additional allotments. Gee, that's just the magic number of how many homes they want to build. But the reality is for me, as a GVID property owner, is that if I wanted to subdivide my 4.7 acres, I couldn't, it would diminish my property value because I would not be able to sell it with the ability for that property owner to actually hook up to water. Because I would keep my water allotment and they wouldn't have one. Now, if you were to give all 400 allotments to Angle Homes today, or if you were to secure them 4,000 more and give them all to Angle Homes and let them build this, you would be depriving each and every one of us in Golden Valley, in the GVID, of our right to sell our property at fair market value. You would be giving them a special carve out. Something that the statute regarding planning and zoning says you're not supposed to do. You're not supposed to make special arrangements to financially enhance any one individual person, property owner, interest development. This is supposed to be our plan for our use. And with that, and all due respect, I would like to ask Supervisor Letman to recuse himself from any vote on, on Golden Valley because he took a substantial donation to his campaign from Angle Homes. And even if it doesn't present a legal conflict of interest, it does present an ethical one. So come on, Rich, don't vote on this. Please, show us you're a better man than that. Thank you.
Jane Grasser. Jane Grasser. Stephen Robinson, you're on deck.
Hello. My name is Jane Grazer. I live at 1385 South Carizo Road, Golden Valley. I strongly, I am strongly opposed to the mass influx of homes being built out in Golden Valley. What I would prefer to see, I am not opposed to growth. I would love to see a police department, or more sustainable resources, or medical care, or possibly animal care. What we need is more structure to the valley. We do not need more homes to the valley. That is pretty much all I want to say today. I'm not really a public speaker, but I do want you to fully hear, understand, and listen to the Golden Valley resident concerns. Because as I believe our second speaker said, it takes about 25 to 30 minutes of emergency response time. I know just recently, sorry, I'm nervous. I woke up at like 3:00 AM during one of our massive storms to a fire that I can see out of my bedroom window. And I watched it burn for quite a while and emergency services could not access that because of road conditions. So all I'm asking to see is responsible growth, not a mass influx of homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Robinson. John Gaul, you're on deck.
Stephen Robinson, Golden Valley. My family's owned property in Golden Valley since 1978. My dad's family has lived there since 1985. Except for one person, they have lived or owned land in there more than anybody else that has spoken up. I've only been there 15, 16 years. But I have to admire the passion that they all share because they get up here and express their opposition to growth. And they say, we want some, some growth, but not radical growth. Well, they all opposed me developing 10 acres into low-density residential in the urban development area last September. So it's not that they don't oppose rational growth, they oppose any growth. Now, I put this here because it tells us the, what the constitution says. And first off, the seventh plank of the Communist Manifesto states, "Development of the land according to a common plan." Well, that was, the constitution was violated in the early 60s when they required general plans. But it's the law of the land, whether we like it or not. But the, in addition to these citizens showing their passion, it's amazing how much they will demonize and insult the board, private party, private citizens, who simply want to do with their land what they want. And if you notice at the bottom of that, Section A says, "All rezonings and zoning regulation amendments adopted under this article shall be consistent with," shall be consistent with and conform to the comprehensive plan. You, you should not be rejecting plans or rezones that are based upon the general plan. And that's what's happened more than once. I'm very glad that Ms. Ole talked about the 2002 area plan. Why? Because that was in direct response to Supervisor Johnson trying to put this building out there in Golden Valley where Privata is now. In response to that, that 2002 area plan that destroyed, took away 25 square miles of developable land, or acres, yeah, 25 square miles, it says, nope, you can only do development on the road. You know, commercial development or any kind of resident, low-density, medium. Well, they, the new plan says, oh, we don't want any more commercial development in the corridor. I represent 800 property owners that own five acres or more in Golden Valley. 500 of those parcels are in the three miles between Redwall and Agrofria, which is a miles north and south of the corridor. You need to allow development that follows the law.
Thank you, sir. John Gaul.
John Gaul, Arizona Land and Water Resources, 2701 Andy Devine, Kingman, Arizona. Chairman Langefelter, Supervisors, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'd like to compliment Danielle on her presentation. We worked with her on the Harmony or Privata project in Golden Valley and the group and found it to be fairly reasonable in our dealings with them. And I'd like to compliment Mr. Gunderson for including the Beaver Dam project, which one of my clients is involved with in the area plan up there. But Danielle brought up a very interesting point, and I know I've mentioned it to you before. I chaired the 205 General Plan Update Committee and things were a lot different then. And we had area plans. If you can remember, Christine Ballard was the head of planning and zoning and some loved her, some hated her. But they were very insistent on these area plans being developed by the community and those area plans being superior to the general plan in a lot of respects. And somewhere along the way, we've gotten to this disconnect where the area plans have gone away. They've been sort of morphed into the entire general plan. And that's taken away the local representation of these groups, communities, to build a plan to where us as a developer could come in and say, okay, we've got a thoroughly thought out area plan that specifies this is where we can do our development. And somehow that's gotten lost in the process and we've seen this disconnect that we have now where the community is not feeling involved. And I can only say from my experience when we did the 205 General Plan Update Committee, the planning and zoning commissioners that were working with me as the representatives for those general plans, we had a tremendous amount of community involvement. And staff was there to support us. We were representing as commissioners, you as the Board of Supervisors as your representatives. And then we were taking the comments from the community and trying to work with staff to incorporate them into the overall general plan. And again, I think somehow, not that it was intentional, but this kind of got lost along the, the area of development in the county and I would like to see that come back. And I thank you for your time.
Blake Bryan. And Isabel Fields, you're on deck.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Blake Bryan, 39, 25, Mormon Flat Road. I'd be in this fight a lot sooner. I just moved up here from Chandler, Arizona. My first question is, I watched Angle Homes go speeding up the 93, right? Well over 55 miles an hour in a construction zone. If they can't follow the speed limit, how can we trust them to follow the laws? First, just throwing that out there. Secondly, I'm a veteran. I moved up here to be in a rural community. Because when I lived in Chandler, Arizona, three doors down from me, I had a drive-by shooting. SWAT showed up twice because violence shows up in large communities. I moved out here for peace. The people have spoken. We're asking you, listen to what we've said. That's it. Thank you.
Isabel Fios, North Mormon Flat Road, Golden Valley. I was up here once before and I really don't have much to add other than what I said prior. This has become a circus of coming here and battling Angle Homes. They are everywhere. They are everywhere. And I said last time, when is enough enough? And apparently, it's not. Last meeting, we agreed to one acre home, one home per acre, and now here we are again. When does it end? That's really what I want to say. And when do you listen to what the community wants and not what Angle Home wants or what other developers want? We're the ones that live here. We're the ones that pay taxes. And we're the ones that like it the way it is. We've made some concessions and yet that's still not, not enough. We're the ones here. I don't see any other group coming here and protesting what's being done. We are. And yet, we are not listened to. If we're not listened to here, then it's obviously, this has become lip service. It's really disappointing to see how we are ignored and made to come back here and, and almost beg you to listen to us. All we're asking is to believe our community the way we want it. You know, when you dig wells, you're lowering the water table for, what do, what do you do when their wells collapse? They don't have the money to go and dig more wells. What are you going to do then? Angle Homes just builds and leaves. When there's no more water, Angle Homes isn't here. You can't get back what you destroyed. Look at the rest of Arizona that is going without water. You cannot live without water. And yet, we continue to build. And the, the question is, why? Who's property? Because we're not. And really, that's all I really have to say.
That was the last speaker that we had formally sign up. Is there anyone that we missed during public hearing that would like to provide comments? I'll do a couple of calls. Is there anybody else during Call to the Public that would wish to provide comments? Sir, come up, state your name and address for the record.
Wayne Hollins, Golden Valley. Big thing for me, of course, is the water. But 3,000 homes out there, and that's just the one development. That's 1.5 million gallons a day for domestic use on those houses. Go on another well in the same aquifer, doesn't give you more water. We don't have any regulations saying if you're going to have a high-water usage from any area in the county, that you're required to put any water back into the ground. And far as our drainages, I'm not sure how to state this. It's not very good. We have a monsoon. The water washes all the dirt down into the same places it's been doing for decades. Instead of fixing it, we just go haul the dirt somewhere else. Fix the dang drainages. And you fix it, starting at the home level. We're talking about having to put detention dams and take care of that water that's going to run off. It shouldn't be running off. It needs to stay where it falls, as much as it can. Obviously, Mother Nature is going to put it somewhere else at times like we just seen recently, especially in Meadview. But you have to, we don't have any regulations to do this. When you build a house, they scrape all the land. They'll take and put the landscape fabric down, cover the place with rocks. And all that does is wash the rocks away whenever we have a big rain. The water can't go into the ground even if it wanted to. So if you're going to do that, at least fix the ground underneath that to be able to take that water and quit having to go out here and spend all the money. We could be fixing roads by having to fix our drainage problems. It's pretty simple. You start up high in the watershed, not down in the bottom. So, and that's just one. I moved to Golden Valley because I wanted to be kind out in the country, and I understand growth. I don't need 3,000 houses a quarter mile from me. Not why I moved to Golden Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to give a public testimony during Call to the Public before we close it? Going once. Going twice. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll open it up to the Board of Supervisors for discussion. Supervisor Barelli, would you, like you, leave a comment?
Yes, I'd like to have him respond to some of the comments, especially some of the comments from Danielle. Ms. Danielle.
Chairman Lingafelter, Supervisor Barelli, excuse me. Are there specific comments you wanted me to address or just in general?
Well, just in general, she hit on public safety, infrastructure, the whole laundry list.
So from an infrastructure standpoint, the infrastructure that's required within the general plan for urban development, like low-density residential, is set out in the general plan, and it's also enforced through the Land Division Regulation. One of the big things that sets urban areas apart from suburban and rural areas is that infrastructure. And through the Land Division Regulations, we can require developers to provide that infrastructure that's expected with those densities. So that includes roads, paved roads, leading to the subdivision and throughout the subdivision, centralized sewer, water, electric, all those, all those services have to be provided as they go through that subdivision process. And so at the start of the process, they start with will-serve letters from utility providers stating, yes, you know, as they go through this process, we will be able to provide service to these lots. And then at the end, before we finalize the subdivision, we receive letters from the utility providers again saying, they've done everything that they needed to do on our end. We're ready to service them. So that, in that respect, that's where we look at things as subdivisions come in, is through those Land Division Regulations. As for traffic and things like that, we do have the ability through the subdivision process for off-site improvements as well. And so as we go through the, at the preliminary plat stage of a subdivision, we do, we require a traffic study. And traffic studies required by Public Works, and by a traffic engineer that looks at the level of service of the roads that would be utilized by the development. And then that study proposes what, any off-site improvements that would need to be done. Whether that's widening of roads, turning movements coming off of the highway leading to the site, things like that. Those documents would also be reviewed by the Arizona Department of Transit. As for the process as a whole that we've gone through, we've tried to be as open as we can and invite comments from the original comments that we received. Staff's original proposal for the Dorado area was to change all of that area to a suburban development area, to those one-acre lots. I've been working with the Subcommittee and the Planning and Zoning Commission, and with revised proposals from Engel Homes. That's where we've gotten to where we are today as we've gone through this process.
Supervisor Barelli.
Mr. Chairman, yes. But it has been said, or alleged, or implied, that these folks have had no representation and they've been ignored at PNZ. That their voices have been quelled, if you will.
Chairman Lingafelter, Supervisor Barelli, we've given them ample opportunity to come. They have. They've shown up at all of these meetings. They showed up at the meeting held in Golden Valley. They've showed up at subcommittee meetings. They've showed up at Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. We've certainly heard their comments. Once staff gives their proposal to that Planning and Zoning Commission, we turn it over to them as they're appointed by the board. And so when the commission recommended to have those alternative changes, that's what staff has gone with.
Mr. Chairman, so I'm confused. So there has been some type of compromise and adjustment when it's gone through this process on some of their concerns and demands?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Barelli, if you look at all of the areas that we went out to, it was mentioned by several of the speakers that, for example, up in the, I think it was Beaver Dam, Littlefield area, we changed a lot, they wanted one-acre lots as well. And we changed a lot of the plan designations to that rural or that suburban density and one-acre lot density. We did not have any objections from any of the community in that area for that. And so that's what we went with. Here in Golden Valley, we received several comments about having the one-acre lots. That's what we presented to the Subcommittee. We presented a plan that showed just one-acre lots. With that, we also received more information from the developer in that area. We presented that to the Subcommittee as well. Ultimately, their decision was to include it in the plan. And so that's what we've been presenting. Since then, it's been reduced as well, so it was a lot more dense. And now you see before you today, they are only asking for the one section in a little bit. And so we, as staff, are very objective in this process. We take in the comments, and we're going to present them to the Subcommittee, to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and to the Board of Supervisors. Golden Valley seems to be the only one that has positions on both sides. So they have the developer side, and they also have the community side. And so all the other areas did not have that. And that's why the recommendations have gone forward as is. Golden Valley is the one that has changed since we first introduced it.
Supervisor Barelli.
Thank you. So basically, who's moving the goalpost?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Barelli, I don't know if I understand your question. The goalposts, there is no goalpost. Our objective as staff is to present what we receive. And then the decision is made by the Planning and Zoning Commission and then the Board of Supervisors.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand that, but I'm just saying, is the community requesting one thing? And then when it goes to PNZ, and the developers agrees to it, and then it goes back to PNZ? And then are you saying that the community, their desire, they're moving the goalposts? They keep changing it? Or has it been consistent?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Barelli, I believe the community has voiced their concern constant throughout the process. They have not changed their input or opinion of what they would like. The other portion of that is Engel Homes and some of the other community members have voiced their support for the development as well. So there's two sides. And that's what the commission takes into consideration and make their decision on.
Okay, so just for clarification, now there's obviously the no side. And the yes side, like you say, the developers and the other folks that live there, they've been trying to compromise with the opposing side?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Barelli, we have seen concessions from the developer as we move through the process. Originally, like we presented, it was that low-density, medium-density type development in that area. They changed their plan to only low-density with a perimeter of suburban, and now to low-density suburban perimeter and a whole section just suburban as well. So their plan has changed throughout the process, yes.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Part of the plan apparently is if you're within three miles of a city limit, you're going to apply the urban development area standards to all properties in that area?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Gould, yeah. So the policy that we're looking to implement with that is to assure that any development that occurs, or essentially rezones that happen in that area, need to comply with the urban standards so that the development meets the city, the city or urban-type infrastructure that they have.
Why do they need to conform to the municipality's idea of how they should build?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Gould, I don't believe it's so much that they have to conform with the city's idea of what they need. What it is, is we want to make sure that the infrastructure is there to support those types of developments within three miles of a city so that we don't get, run into a situation where we're getting development that's essentially on septic systems or don't have the water infrastructure or electrical infrastructure that would be needed to be implemented with the city. If that makes sense.
So in Kingman, once this new road is done, you won't end up with a Butler New Kingman 2.0 on the east side of town, basically, is what you're saying?
I'm not sure that's fair to the people that have bought property in that area. In my district, I have areas that abut Lake Havasu City's city limits. I have areas that abut Bullhead City limits. And I'm not sure that some of those areas, you're going to be able to get those people to comply. There's individual lots in those areas too. So you're going to make that individual pave the road?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Gould, this would only apply for your larger subdivisions that are coming in.
And what would, yuck?
A single lot would not have to pave a road or put in sewer to conform. It's when we're seeing larger development projects that come into that area, essentially creating lots less than one acre, they would have to bring in the water, roads, and sewer, which we require regardless throughout the county already.
So if they were going to subdivide it into lots that were less than one acre, that's the rule?
Correct.
Okay. It looked like you're going to apply the urban development area to Yucca Township that's existed since 1864?
Chairman Lingafelter, Supervisor Gould, that's correct. So that's the zoning in that township is the A-zone, which is our general zone.
Because the town predates zoning.
Right. And so in looking at it, so the issue we've seen is that somebody will either split their lot, or they'll combine lots and then try and resplit them. And the A-zone has a five-acre minimum lot size.
Well, now it does.
Right. And so
Because you changed the rules.
And so as they come in and they try and go through that rezone process, if they had a property that is on the west side of I-40, and they already had a commercial business, and they're trying to rezone it to meet the minimum lot size of the zone again, they had split it, they would have to do a plan amendment, even though that use is already existing. And so the urban development area is a broader category, and it would allow for residential if someone was trying to put a home there, or it allows for commercial uses for those that are already running businesses out there.
So is it going to involve paving the roads in there? Or since those properties already exist, that's not going to apply?
Because those properties exist, that wouldn't apply. The only time that would apply is if someone was doing like a large commercial project that would have a large impact on the roads. They may have to provide some road improvements as part of that new commercial development.
Because the two roads that serve those two areas are the drainage roads that are controlled by ADOT.
Yeah, so those, as we get new commercial and we go through the site plan process, commercial properties also have to go through traffic studies. And those will be looked at by Public Works and ADOT to determine any off-site improvements that require.
So do the ADOT improvements, do those get recommended before the zoning change?
No, those typically come at the site plan review stage.
Which is after the rezoning?
After rezone, correct.
Which is problematic in this case, in several cases. What else do I have? Need to take a look. I got about a 10-second spot, or look at the maps on what you've got going on in my district. So for a major general plan amendment, it's 1,800 acres, which is almost three sections.
Chairman Lingafelter, Supervisor Gould, yeah, so that's not something that we changed in this update. And so any general plan amendment, major or minor, has to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then the Board of Supervisors. Any plan amendment comes before the Board for your approval. A major amendment has other statutory requirements. You can only, there's a certain window you have to apply for a major general plan amendment. And you can only hear major general plan amendments one time a year. So it's a lot more restrictive for those major amendments. And so it's usually very large developments that trigger those major general plan amendments. Most of what we do is minor.
Are those that acreage is set by state statute?
Don't believe so. I think that's something that we
The process is set by statute? Interesting. I think that's it for now. Thank you, Chairman.
Supervisor Martin.
Thank you. I don't even know where to start with the problems we got here. Let me drag Will into this because he's been really quiet about this. And of course, our quasi-lawyer out there, she's got all these lawsuits, and we're all going to get sued and all that. So I would ask you, before I delve into these other issues, what we're doing and what is being proposed, are they legal? Or as our ex-official lawyer out there seems to think, we're operating illegally and going to get sued, and one guy can't even talk about it. And so what's your say on this?
Attorney Davis.
I'll address the whole board. Members of the board, I have reviewed and asked for second opinion on 11805 Paragraph L, which relates to, which says that if there's a revised or new plan, then the county will redo all the previous procedures to comply that are mentioned in that article. Reading the rest of 805, it is the county attorney's office interpretation that that applies if there's a motion to approve the plan, and it fails, so the plan does not get approved, which means that allows reconsideration of the plan within whatever our procedures are, or allows for a revised plan to keep coming up to the Board every year until a new plan is adopted, or it is opted to go with the previous plan and just keep 2015 through. That only applies, like I said, if a vote is taken to approve the plan and that fails. That has not happened yet. Since that hasn't happened yet, we are still on the same first general plan semittel. Therefore, L doesn't apply yet. That is our interpretation as regards to L.
Supervisor Martin.
Okay, so are, according to you and your opinion, are we in violation of anything right now and, and, and dealing with this?
Not in the opinion of the county attorney's office.
Perfect. Okay, so we'll, we'll take that up later on. One of the things that, that I read into this was that this is a guiding document. It's not locked in stone. It's a guiding document. But as some of the speakers have said, this isn't about what a individual or a particular developer wants. This is about what the community wants. And I've heard that statement long and since we've been doing this. It's what the community wants. Now, here's what my conundrum is. I got this group over here, but there is, there is out there a group and Mr. Robinson probably associates with them that are for more development and want to see Golden Valley develop more. But you know what? There's about 7,000 people that haven't said a word, to my knowledge, about what they really want. And, and the way I interpret this golden or this general plan, we need something that, that represents what the people in the community want. So the problem I got is what about these 7,000 people that have not said a word that I'm aware of, that are not aligned with this group or not aligned with Mr. Robinson's people? So where do we go with that? So that leaves me with a conundrum of, okay, who, who do I truly need to represent on this matter? And I'll, I'll just say this. Back in 2024, when we were running for office, I made a commitment to the people in Golden Valley and specifically to Golden Valley. I said, I work for you. You don't work for me. What you want is what I will project to my office. So I'm here today to say I'm, I'm going to represent Golden Valley. I, I, I'm going to do it. There's no question about it. But I have, I have so many questions about the, the different aspects of this general plan and, and where this is going. You know, I, I, you know, I've said publicly before, I want commercial along 68. I don't want it scattered from hell to breakfast out there. I want it on 68. So people who live out there know where they go for commercial services. So they're not driving up and down roads looking. Now, I understand that with bravata, Aztec is probably going to become, whether we like it or not, a, some kind of a commercial thing because it's going to be servicing a lot of people out. So I understand that, but for, for my money right now, I want 68 to be, that's where, that's where we want commercial. You know, if ands or buts. So, so we, I think we can pretty much all agree on that. You know, again, this all boils down to, in my opinion, what the community. And, and it's very interesting. And something's come up today that I've said since the beginning. Every community in my district has a different identity and a different flavor for what they want. What works in Golden Valley, I don't think would work in North Kingman at all. Same thing. So rather than, than try to make a one size fits all, I think that we have to look at it and say, we've got different communities that have different values. And I, and if we can facilitate making those values work, that's what we should do. So what I'm saying is, at, at the end of the day, and I've, I've got a list of things here. I could go on. I bet for an hour for flood, for density, for infrastructure, we could go on and on. But what I'm going to say is this. I think that my responsibility as a supervisor is to represent the people that elected me. And I'm going to do that. And that's okay. That's, that's my, that's who I work for. I work for them. And I'm going to work for them again today. But I just want it noted that every one of our communities within my district, and then when you take it off to the other district, I bet they have the same thing. So I, I want to see us do that. I want to see us represent the people that are making, are here today and making their wishes known. Uh, I wish more people, I would love to have heard from 7,000 people on how they feel. But we don't have that before us today and we're going to make a decision. So with that being said, like I said, I, I, you know, my, my major concern was the legality since it was brought up, uh, by the lady that what we were doing here was wrong and we're all going to be indicted for something and Letman better not say a word and, and all that. But we're going to, we're going to go on. We're going to take care of business today. And I, I'll say this, I appreciate y'all's input. I heard you loud and clear and I'm going to represent. And with that, I'll.
Supervisor Letman, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Letman is going to speak. So I have a couple of questions for our attorney. Attorney Davis, how many votes are required to approve the general plan?
Mr. Chair Supervisor Letman, uh, the statute says a two-thirds majority of the board. Two-thirds as a percentage of 67. Eight out of the 15 counties in Arizona have five-member boards. You can't get two-thirds out of a five-member board. So we go to the next number, which is four-fifths, which is 80%. So four fifths is required to pass.
So any general plan requires four members up here to vote in favor of it. I think that's a critical, critical point to remember. And if we do not approve the plan today, do we revert back to the 2015 plan?
If there is no action taken today, if, I should say, if the board doesn't choose to amend the general plan, which would then send it back to planning and zoning for them to do their thing and then it comes back up. If the board just says flat denial of this general plan, then the 2015 general plan guides, guides until a new general plan replaces it.
Allow me to play devil's advocate. If I were Angle Holmes, I would almost want a no vote on this today. We go back to the 2015 plan, which basically has two sections of fairly medium density housing in it. We've come forward and it said, we're going to, excuse me. The, the compromise offered by Angle Holmes is to take out half of that available land for that purpose. So if we don't approve that, okay, we go back to the 2015 plan. And I'm not sure that's what Golden Valley wants. So I, I would take that into consideration as we do this vote today, okay, that I'm certainly going to cast a vote. Okay. And then I think by remove, it, it's obvious if the plan passes that Golden Valley is probably going to put this proposal for Dorado through what I would call death by a thousand cuts, okay, as the process moves forward. You're going to move everything from zoning to planning, putting forward special use permits, water, sewer, all of it. Clearly, the, the community i- is, is going to impose the death by a thousand cuts. So I, I think frankly, you're better off, okay, going ahead and accepting this plan, okay? Because it is just removed, it's just removed a full section out of it. If you turn down the plan, that section goes right back in, okay, as devolable. So that would be my point of view.
Order please. Continue. Are you done?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor, Supervisor Barelli. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And just a quick question. Does the sixty, highway 68 corridor, does it still revert back to commercial?
Mr. Chair Supervisor.
Has it been carved out, commercial?
Are you, are you speaking as if the plan gets denied and then it reverts back? Or is that what you're speaking to?
No, my, my question is, let me say, wrote this down. Is highway 68 corridor, is commercial returned back into this plan?
The current plan before you, and we're going to bring it up to the projector if possible. The 68 corridor has existing commercial along it, along the, the entirety of the corridor. All of those properties, we maintained their commercial designation. Um, anything else that did not have a commercial designation along the 68 that is zoned essentially residential and has some residential development on it, we put to the suburban residential designation. Uh, this, if this gets adopted, that doesn't mean they can't come forward in the future and apply for that amendment along the 68. Staff would most likely recommend approval in that scenario because 68 holds so much commercial in that area. Uh, but the one that you see on your screen right now is what's being proposed.
Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I hear members talking about voting today. I believe we have 60 days from September 7th that we're, we get to analyze the plan. So I don't think we're, we're not taking a vote today. The other interesting question that Attorney Davis brought up was whether we rejected the plan. We voted to send the plan back to planning and zoning. I think that's a rejection. Which applies, which puts a different standard in play and a different timeline in play also. We didn't just take no action and have it automatically revert. I believe we made a motion to send it back to planning and zoning.
Mr. Chair.
Director Holtry.
To that point, Supervisor Gould, I would, and I'll rely on Attorney Davis. Uh, but I believe there is a section that if the board has any changes to the plan or wants uh, changes to be made, they can revert it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to rehear. Uh, actually, they have to send it back to Planning and Zoning Commission if they have changes. Uh, but that does not, uh, that's not part of the section that states that you have to go through the entire process again. The section L that Attorney Davis was referencing uh, states if there is a denial vote on the plan, then that's where we would have to reconsider a new plan, the old plan or whatever, and we would take that through the entire process.
No, Mr. Chairman, Director Holtry, that's not really my point. My main point is that the, the plan was put in the hands of the Board of Supervisors on September 2nd. And the statute gives us 60 days to, to analyze it, to see what our constituents think of it. And I frankly, if we were to vote today, it would be unfair to our constituents because this may be the first time that any of them have seen anything. Because that, that's why we televise the meetings is so they have the ability to either show up in person, uh, watch it on YouTube or watch it at a later date on YouTube. Um, and I, I think that doing a vote today would be a great disservice to the public. And I believe it has to be, whatever you've come up with has to be redistributed to the county, the surrounding counties and cities.
Mr. Chair.
Because you can't, something that came, we rejected and sent back to planning and zoning is, when they were, had been noticed before, is not the same thing that we're looking at today.
Director Holtry.
I may be wrong and I've been wrong before, but.
I'd say I, I would have to defer to Attorney Davis. Uh, my, my interpretation is, is that this, when we draft the plan, we send it out to the stakeholders uh, as prescribed in section F of the statute. Uh, those, that was done in April, um, to the Board of Supervisors, to ADWR, to all of the, the cities, the different agencies, and that was the 60-day notice prior to the first public hearing. Uh, the commission then holds a, a public hearing, uh, then makes a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Uh, the Board of Supervisors must also hold a public hearing, which was done, um, I believe in September or I can't remember the, the date that we were.
I would beg to differ. I think that's today.
We did, we did hold a public hearing at the board level.
And that's when we sent it back to planning and zoning?
Correct. Correct.
So this is, there's changes that have been made. I would argue that the public hearing is today.
Mr. Chair, and I would also say that the statute allows for changes to be made in the plan. And that's when it gets sent back to the, the Planning and Zoning Commission and then back up to the board. Uh, but it only states that you have to redo the entire process if it gets denied, if the plan gets denied, is my understanding. Attorney Davis, um, this special meeting was held simply just to, to really delve into this and dive into this one topic. I don't believe statute, and I keep hearing this, this 60 days, you can tell me where this fits in, but statute doesn't define a specific timeline for, for approval of this. This process has already been going on for 20 months almost. So, um, I don't think that we're required to vote today. I think we, we, we can legally take all the information that we've heard today from all, all of the folks and, and and revisit this on a future agenda if we need to. Is that correct?
That is correct. And if, if, if I may, Mr. Chair, I'll speak strictly as a textualist. Uh, reading the statute, section L just says, "If the motion to adopt or re-adopt the plan or amendment to the plan fails to pass, the board may reconsider the motion of any manner allowed by the board's rules. But any subsequent adoption or readoption of the plan or a major plan amendment must be approved by affirmative vote of two-thirds of the board." "If the board fails to adopt or re-adopt the plan, the current plan remains into effect until a new plan is adopted. The board shall either reconsider the proposed plan or consider revised plan within one year and shall continue to do so until one is adopted. All subsequent considerations of a new or revised plan was complied with the procedures prescribed in this article." Speaking with the whole paragraph in, in context, based on the first sentence, if a motion to adopt or re-adopt the plan or amendment has failed to pass, that was never given and therefore L wouldn't kick in. That, that's our interpretation. To answer your question more directly, no, we do not have, the board does not have to vote on anything today. Any amendments that they wish to see can be voted on and go back to the planning and zoning and then come back to the board at a later time, or the board can take no action. But if the board takes no action, there's no direction to staff on what to do next.
That's my view too. Uh, Director Holtry, just from my own information, past, uh, versions of the general plan, did used to have area plans. Can you refresh my memory on, on why, why has Mojave County migrated away from the area plan approach?
Absolutely. Mr. Chair and Board members, I believe it was while Chris Ballard was here as well, we started, uh, we looked at the area plans and they were causing, um, some issues, probably unintended from when they were first created. Uh, the biggest issue being somebody wanted to come in and rezone their property and it wasn't in compliance with the general plan, but was in compliance with the area plan. State statute still required us to amend that general plan. And so they still would have to come in and do that amendment. Or sometimes they would have to amend both plans. Um, this was causing an undue hardship on the applicants. They have to, they had to pay an extra fee. And it wasn't good for the county to have two documents that essentially contradicted each other. Um, the general plan was not the area plan designations. It had different designations in them. Um, with that, we went to the board and we said, hey, these area plans are not in, um, compliance or, uh, concurrence with the, uh, general plan that is adopted, that's regulated by the state statute. Uh, we would like to, uh, incorporate them in the plan, which I believe was the intention all along, what they would like to do for specific area plans. Uh, so we incorporated all of the area plan designations into the general plan. And that was done, uh, I would want to say three or four years ago. Uh, with that, and with this general plan update, we wanted to make sure the goals and policies that were created in those area plans were also incorporated into the, the general plan. So for example, the only, I don't know if there's other ones, but the one we know for sure, the Yucca area plan had specific goals and policies. Uh, so like, uh, Mr. Gunnison mentioned in his presentation, those. So like Mr. Gunnison mentioned in his presentation, those goals and policies have its own section within the general plan. Essentially, the area plan is still there, the designations that came with it and the goals and policies. We just combined, instead of having two separate document, documents, now we just have one.
Got it. Well, as Supervisor Martin has indicated, all of our, Mojave County is huge, first of all. And, and about the only thing that all of our, our communities have in common is all the dollar stores. Is there, is there a possibility for maybe adding another general plan to the, I mean, the Golden Valley area? Is there any, I mean, it's not my district. I'm not speaking for Supervisor Martin or District Four, but I've heard a few comments today about losing the local flavor of a community. And what are your thoughts on that? Just from my own information.
Mr. Chair, absolutely. The, there's provisions within state statute that allow for area plans. I don't believe it was ever intended in the state statute to make a separate document, but a document within the general plan. So if the, the community wanted to create goals and policies specific for Golden Valley, that is, that's what it's there for and we'd be able to do that. I don't believe they had any in their area plan and that's why, I mean, they had some language in there that was brought up to the board, but it wasn't specific goals and policies that we implemented into the general.
I only asked the question academically. It's not my district. It's not my decision.
Yeah, absolutely. We could do that.
But, gosh, I was going to ask something else. I forgot what it was. Well, I'm thinking about it. Supervisor Burley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and you brought up a good point. There's only two of us that were here that started out on city councils, Supervisor Gould and myself.
And me.
Oh, that's right. And I'm sorry, sorry. And Supervisor Letman, the chairman. Yes, right. So we do have that experience. So when the cities amend the general plan, it goes to the voters to, to pass. And of course, we're unique. We don't have to do that. But in course Supervisor Gould and myself understand when you're trying to run legislation statewide, you know, what works good in Glendale and doesn't play well in Peoria. So trying to do that as a big giant blanket, it's, it gets very problematic. There's always somebody's going to get, or their ox is going to get gouged. So I don't know if this is for you or for, for, or Attorney Davis, but is there anything that prevents us from carving these up into separate approvals for every district or area? Is there anything that prevents us from doing that?
You want to field that question?
I can take that one. Supervisor Burley, the 11-805 does allow for the plan to be adopted in sections. I would recommend, I don't have a recommendation of adopting it in sections. I'm apathetic to that, whatever the board wants to do. I would say that if any amendments, suggested amendments are to policies themselves, those affect all of, all eight subareas, and that I would recommend sending it all as one because they affect all of them together. But if the plan, the idea would be to, it's hypothetical of approving subareas, all policies, subareas, one through four, six through eight, and then leaving five, which is Golden Valley, that could be done as well. So you could do it in sections to answer your question.
Director Holtry, I remembered my, my question, and maybe it's Attorney Davis as well, but Supervisor Letman did bring up an interesting point that if this new compromise that we've heard about with this Dorado, it's not incorporated and approved into this plan, what, what plan and standard are they, are they held to? I mean, from what I've seen, and correct me if I'm wrong, but in previous iterations, there was much denser development that was programmed for that area. I also have questions about if nothing happens as far as activity within a certain time period that it's supposed to revert. I mean, we've talked about that before. I don't know what's happened with this one. Back to the previous zoning qualification or, or the previous zone. But my immediate question is what, what standard of, of density and development would they be held to if this isn't approved?
Mr. Chair, if the 2025 general plan is not approved, then it would revert back to the 2015 general plan designations, which allows for the low-density, medium-density, commercial designations that are in that area.
So let me, let me stop you right there. So you're saying that if this compromise is not approved, that legally they would be permitted to, to build at dense, at greater densities? Is that, is that an accurate? Yeah, Supervisor Gould, thank you.
They would then have, the general plan would allow it, but they would still have to come to the board for the, for the change. So it doesn't, it would not be automatic. It would be, they would still retain the ability to come to the board to ask for that.
That answers my question.
To that point, they did come for a rezone already on that, that 1,400 acres and they could not come back for another rezone within one year. I believe it was sometime last year that they came for that rezone. So they can't come for another, what was it? Never mind, never mind. It's already been past a year. So they could come for a rezone on the, on those parcels and it is in compliance with what the general plan currently shows.
All right, that's all I have. Supervisor Martin, thank you.
Okay, one other thing. The board received a letter from the Fort Mojave Mesa Fire Department objecting to, I think it was the part about the policy 12.11 on page nine, development near city limits. Ron, did you get that? Did you get a letter from former Mojave on that?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Supervisor Martin, I did get that letter and I received similar concerns from Desert Hills Fire.
And, and I also met with the Golden Valley Fire Department and they absolutely had, had problems with it. So that's, that is definitely a part I think that we can all agree on that the fire departments are not in, they don't want that at all.
I'd be curious to maybe delve more into that, especially in Golden Valley, where there is no incorporated city or town.
But it says within three miles.
Of an incorporated city or town.
And Kingman, from the Kingman city limits over the hill.
And, and.
What's the mileage? It's more than three miles. There's, yeah, that's quite a few acres in between. But just to that point, and I'm a little confused by the, the fire district's concern. It wouldn't.
Supervisor Gould, point of order. Go ahead.
Does Golden Valley have a defined boundary in an unincorporated area?
I mean, the. There's quite a bit of public land and a mountain range in between.
Yeah, you have to go over the mountains to get into Kingman. You have to go over either Coyote Pass or the other way.
Just, just to the point on the fire district, I'm not sure what their concern is. What the intent of the policy in the, that we placed in the general plan is to, is for development to make sure any new development that comes in meets urbanized standards, but it does not regulate fire districts. So I'm, I'm not exactly sure what their, again, the general plan doesn't regulate anything. It's again, a guide. And certain development that comes in has to comply with the general plan. But it does, this wouldn't affect fire districts. So I'm, I guess I'm kind of concerned or confused at what the fire district is concerned about.
It would only affect the fire districts if, if a city that's incorporated decided to annex property that they're serving. I know the city of Kingman has been going back and forth with NACFED for several years about whether or not they want to annex the Kingman Airport Industrial Park, and they actually decided not to annex the Kingman Industrial Park because it was going to be detrimental to, to NACFED. So I, I don't think a level of development automatically equates to a city annexing an area. And that's, that's where they lose service area and, and revenue. Supervisor Martin.
Let me read this and I'll, I'll read off the letter. "Requiring development near city limits to conform to urban standards may undermine the sustainability of fire district operations, disrupt established service bounding, creating confusion over jurisdictional responsibilities and inhibit growth and development. Fire districts play a vital role in protecting county residents who live outside incorporated areas. And policies that encourage annexation or shift development away from our jurisdiction could negatively affect our ability to provide an equitable level of service." So that is what the fire department is concerned in. And notice they said disrupt established boundaries, who, protecting residents who live outside incorporated areas. So, I mean, the way I read that, they're talking about not only next to cities, but incorporated areas too.
Incorporated areas are cities.
Well, no, it says outside.
It's unincorporated, right.
In incorporated areas.
And I'm saying that the general plan does not have anything in the general plan that recommends annexation. That's a city, that's a city mayor and council decision.
Right, but I think what their concern is, is that this may, this may be a precursor or something like that. And it seems funny to me that every fire department I talk to is against it, so.
I respect all the fire districts, but I don't think that that's, it's certainly something that I know our mayor and council in Kingman are actively talking to NACFED. They, I mean, point in case, again, they were going to think about annexing the industrial park and NACFED said, hey, wait, you're going to really damage us. And so we, we're not, so the mayor and council decided, no, we're not going to annex the airport. The general plan doesn't, doesn't advocate for annexation. There's nothing in it that says that we want the, the city councils to annex properties, which is.
It says may.
It does say may, yes. But I'm saying that there's a difference between requiring a certain, a certain level of, of of development standard, it doesn't automatically equate to a city saying we're going to annex that. The, the, the thing that is going to help Kingman is once this new interchange is done, we don't want to end up with another new Kingman Butler where you have to go in and you have to retroactively put in sewer and ADQs involved because everybody's lots are so close and you have a bunch of septics that are all jammed together that are starting to fail and then that affects the water table. You don't want that. That's a bad thing. That leads to norm of bad places. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the fire districts are concerned that we're going to implement a policy that's going to ease annexation of unincorporated areas, which reduces the size of their fire district and makes their fire district less viable because they have less people in there to spread the cost of the fire. They're already having trouble maintaining their systems as it is. And, and really I see no benefit to the, the property owners to make them do this. Just, we have a problem with Desert Hills Fire. We've had a problem for years that before the state changed the annexation rules, Lake Abysouls City annexed down Arizona 95 to the north to get to the airport and to the shopping mall. And so what they do now is every time a retailer comes in to that area, they use that as a basis to annex those retailers out of Desert Hills Fires District. So they see reduced taxation, but they still end up being the first responders many times. But I, I just seems like we're trying to pave the way to, so the cities can come in and annex it without it costing the cities anything, which is generally the only thing that keeps the cities from annexing. They, they're taking a look at the value of property and the tax revenue that they would receive off of that property. Another reason Kingman might not want to annex the airport is because the county is, takes care of the roads. And that's been an issue in the past, that we gave them an airport. And generally when I give somebody something, if I give you a car, don't come back and ask me for, to pay for your oil change. To me, it's just bad form. I take it for what it is. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. I think to that, to that point, I think that phase two of the airport, that the, that the city is, is looking at, at annexing that. But we're only talking, we're, I mean, if a city annexes property, it, it takes over the fire service for that, but you know, it's, it's, it's not going to automatically say now you, now the city has to annex. And, and there's so much BLM land and state trust land out there, you know, good luck connecting because you have to actually touch the boundary of a fire district in order to join a fire district. You can't, if you have a, a neighbor that, that butts the fire district boundary and they don't want to join the fire district and you have the lot right next to them, it doesn't matter how much you want to join that fire district because if your neighbor is, has, is on the boundary and they don't join, you can't join either. That's state law. That's, I think that's state law. You can, I think it's, you have to actually be touching the boundary of the fire district in order to, to join the fire district. Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Fire districts that have areas that are not contiguous. I think Northern Arizona has areas that are not contiguous. Whether you can annex them in, I don't know how that ended up. And you, you might also have an issue where the state statute is changed over the years too. Thank you, Chairman.
Well, I'd ask the board, is there any appetite to entertain a motion today? Or do we just want to take all the information that we've received today, continue to evaluate and then place this on a future agenda? And it looks like Mr. Davis has something else to contribute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Only briefly to say that there's any motion to approve for any reason, L starts to kick in. So that, that, that becomes a thing to be aware of. So if, if, as well as in September, the direction from the board, the, the general plan was ready to go. There was no legal impediments. The issue was open meeting complaint from the subcommittees. And so to remove that cloud, the board sent it down for them to redo that and come back. And then at that planning and zoning meeting, that's when that amendment came. So if the, if the board has any changes they like to make, now could be the time to direct staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is what we want to see changed. This policy gone, this done in subarea, whatever, whichever. And that way, when it does come back to the board, it can be ready to go, if that's up, up to the board. But that's a suggestion.
Well, speaking for District One, I've worked very, over the last 20 months, I've worked very closely with all of my communities. And everybody was satisfied with what has happened. And so I'm, I'm prepared to vote for all the communities in the regions that are District One. I think they're ready to go. There's nothing more to be said on those. Supervisor Lemon.
So I have a question for Attorney Davis. I, I still don't understand the answer to Supervisor Gould's question about the 60-day period for us to take a look at the documents. Yes or no?
So Supervisor Lemon, it is my understanding that in September, when, when we, when the board received this and sent it back down to planning and zoning, it was ready to go. I believe I sent a memo to that effect of saying there's no legal impediment to adopting the plan, but it may not be good policy to adopt it with the cloud of the open meeting law above it. And so while it can go forward, you could also send it down, tell them to redo it and come back. At that time, it was also raised a concern of, of the size of the maps and the ability to, to read the maps that were given. And then the idea was floated, we would have a special meeting, go through the plan at a more in-depth surgical level than attaching it to an already long board meeting. And that's how we got to this meeting. So it is the opinion of the county attorney's office that we're ready, we are able to go if the board is ready to go.
Other discussion. Supervisor Martin, thank you.
So I'm confused. So if we, if we're going to vote on the plan, does that include the Dorado plan?
If there is a motion, if it's a straight motion to approve, which I would say is really one of the only things, if you're going to approve, it can't be with conditions like it would be on zoning. It's just a motion to approve the 2025 general plan, that would include Dorado. If any members of the board have sections that they would like to see changed, a motion could be, and I would prefer it to be in sort of an omnibus, omnibus motion that staff reevaluate for specific reasons, subarea five, or review policy, the exact policy for the three-mile boundary, if that's a problem, and see if that motion carries enough votes to, which would only require three out of five. to, which would only require three out of five, because we're not adopting the plan. If that motion has enough votes to pass, if three out of five members are happy with the three-mile radius, then a second motion could be the subarea five, and that's my gist on, on any changes, is that they be listed in one motion to get the, the understanding of what staff needs to do, what the Planning and Zoning Commission needs to review, when it comes, and that way that the plan is brought back and be able to be fully adopted without having to ping pong back and forth several times.
Supervisor Letman.
So if we make any changes today, this is going right back to planning and zoning, is that correct?
Correct.
Oh, boy.
Attorney Davis, on what's agendized and, and motioned today, can there be more than one motion? Or does it just need to be one? Can we entertain more than one motion?
I believe there could if the motions are to amend certain sections. If there's a motion to amend a certain section or adopt sections and then not adopt other sections, one is better, but if the, if there is only a motion to approve, there can only be one. But if, if one supervisor says, I don't like the policy on the three-mile radius, and three out of five agree, the plan goes back down, those are reviewed, and then another supervisor could say, I want to look at subarea whichever, and I want to see these changes, and then that could go back down. I hope that answered your question.
Sure. It does. What, Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Davis, I'm looking at 11-805-F, which says that at least 60 days before the comprehensive plan or an element of, or major amendment of a comprehensive plan is noticed pursuant to subsection G of this section, the commission shall transmit the proposal to the board of supervisors and submit a copy for further review to each two, and it, then it runs down the, the list of where it goes. It came back and was distributed to the supervisors on September 2nd, which is in 60 days from today.
Our position is that it was the August 4th meeting, however, 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 however. If the board wants a safer approach, if the board wants to take a more conservative approach, one would be to delay past the 60 days, and we can put it on a regular board's agenda and, and make those amendments beyond the 60 days. That is a conservative approach that is certainly able to be taken, it's not, it's, I'm not recommending against it, is what I'll say.
So if that were the case, then what we would do is just adjourn today? With no action?
Yes, that's correct.
And we would put it on the regular November 3rd supervisor's agenda, correct? That is about 60 days. True, we'd put it on the agenda.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I'm looking at Clerk Skubal.
So you would like to have this on November 3rd? Because the, the, this actually was heard at the August 4th VOS meeting, and at that time, the motion was made by Supervisor Gould and seconded in by Supervisor Letman to approve the, the sending the general plan back to Planning and Zoning Commission to rehear and direct to the subcommittees, return for review by Planning and Zoning, and then be brought before the board at a special board of supervisors meetings, which is today. Motion carried 5-0 with Chairman Linganfielder, and, well, with everyone voting yes. So that occurred on August 4th. If you want to give, do you want 60 days from this date, or are you saying the 60 days and then the November, and, and hear this November 3rd?
No, what I'm saying is the, what he just said is the conservative approach is to respect the point of view of Supervisor Gould, that in fact, the notification didn't come back to us until September 7th. September 7th from 60, plus 60 days would place it sometime in the next two weeks. Correct? It was September 2nd or September 7th? Then it should be on the, placed on the agenda for the November 3rd agenda of our meeting.
That a motion?
Yes, that is a motion.
Heard that motion, seconded, and additional discussion. Are there none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I just fear to have it, do have it, it's ordered. Thank you all today for taking time out of your busy schedules to join us for this meeting, we appreciate it. We are adjourned.